Good evening and welcome to the Town Board meeting. It is September 24th, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for coming to tonight's Town Board meeting. As you can see Claire Horace, the deputy Town Clerk is pinch hitting for Sue McCann, who is out tonight, and Bill O'Neil is not with us tonight and won't be with us tonight. But we'll do the best we can as we go on. I will start by reading the statement of the supervisor, the monthly statement of the supervisor ending August 31st because of change in staff and difficulty in trying to get things squared away, we're a little bit late with this, so it wasn't given at the first meeting of the month. So here it is. "To the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook pursuant to section 119 of the Town Law, I hereby tender the following detailed statement of all monies received and dispersed by the supervisor during the month. The opening balance was $3,801,532 dollars. Receipts were $650,436 dollars. We dispersed $782,085, leaving a balance of $3,669,883 dollars." And there are no budget adjustments, so I can say the above is a true and correct accounting of the balances shown on the books of the Town of Red Hook at the close of business on August 31st, 2014. Does the Town Board have any comment or questions? Is there a motion to accept the report?
So.
Second?
Second.
Any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Do you have anything to report? So we will start with announcements and go into public comment and at eight o'clock we will open a public hearing regarding our Community Development Block Grant. If we make it through the next 10 minutes quickly, we may call on you all and get you in and out. I'm sure you have wonderful things to do, sheep to tand and all that. So we'll see how it goes, we'll do our best. Jim, have you any, any announcements? Brenda, how about you?
Just one last time for the hazardous waste and electronics recycling in Rhinebeck, October 4th. It costs $5, call 463-6020. And it's from 7:30 until 9:00 a.m.
Great, thank you Brenda. Perry, do you have any?
Just to remind people that week from Saturday on the, on the, on the 4th, Saturday the 4th is Street Painting Day in Tivoli, so it's a great day to have, have a lot of fun.
And it's really chocking, isn't it?
It's chocking, listen, you have never seen dirty little kids. They're every color of the rainbow.
It's a great activity, wonderful event.
Sue, would you mind if I made a comment?
Please.
So the Red Hook Rotary is, in cooperation with the Red Hook Library, is going to be holding a used book sale at the Village Hall on October 25th. The library and the Rotary will collect books on October Saturdays, the 4th, 11th, and 18th, between, between 10 and 2 for the collections.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes.
We should bring them to?
Bring them to the library on those Saturdays, please, between 10 and 2. The book sale is on the 25th at the Village Hall, bigger place. Thank you.
Great, great, that's a great activity. Okay, we'll try to remember to announce that one more time. And I have two brief announcements. One has to do with helping raise awareness that there is a Lifeline Discount Telephone Service Program for eligible consumers and because the recent week was designated as National Lifeline Awareness Week, New York State Department of Public Service is joining with other state agencies to promote Lifeline Awareness Week and focus attention on this important program. And that's the Emergency Response Pendent that people who live alone often wear, that allows them to contact people if they need help. And I know from personal experience, it's a wonderful program. This does provide some help for people who need financial help and the contact number The woman's name is Lorna Gillings and there is also a woman contacted at 518-408-1061. Her name is Yvonne, Yvonne Supper, and they can be contacted as information sources for this discount telephone service. And the second announcement, and one that I always love to make, is this time every year, the Northern Dutchess community is responding to overcome poverty, which is known as CROP. Hunger Walk is sponsored by the Church World Service and organized by nine Red Hook and Rhinebeck churches. This year's walk is on Sunday, October 26th, it's going to be a busy weekend, and it's beginning at St. Christopher's Annex on Benner Road. Registration begins at 12:30 in the afternoon, the walk begins at 1:00. Seventy-five percent of the proceeds raised to go to the organization for worldwide food relief and education, 25% go to five local church food pantries, including St. Christopher's, Red Hook Methodist, St. John's Reformed, Church of the Messiah, and Rhinebeck Reformed Church. The nine churches who participate are those above and Christ Episcopal Church, St. Paul's Lutheran Church in Red Hook, Memorial Lutheran Church in Mylarne, and St. Paul's Trinity Episcopal in Tivoli. Again, the walk is held in October and in alternate years, either in Rhinebeck where it was last year and Red Hook this year. There's a short route of two miles through Red Hook and a longer route of four and a half miles for hardier walkers. This is the 35th year of CROP Hunger Walk in Red Hook and Rhinebeck. The numbers of walkers have ranged from 75 to 110 through the years and proceeds have ranged from $8,000 to $13,000 annually. If anyone wishes to sponsor a walker, they may call Kerry Robinson, the number is 845, he is the chairperson, 845-532-7552. Ending hunger, one step at a time. I like that slogan. So I hope you will find someone who is a walker and offer to sponsor them and they will be happy to take your contribution and make sure it goes to the right person. Okay, thank you. Is there any public comment before we start? Okay, hearing none. I think we can start straight off the bat with Historic Red Hook. And going closer, you going to be the stop woman to this?
I'll just make sure.
That's great. Would you make sure that that mic is on? It doesn't sound like it's on. I've noticed on television recently, there's a little, oh yes it is, I beg your pardon, it is on.
It's on.
It is on, yes. I noticed.
I'll just speak loudly.
Yes, speak right into it and then it'll televise well.
Well, you know how to lose, haven't you?
We have technical help already.
It's not behaving well.
That's all right.
All right.
Okay. Thank you. So I am honored to be here this evening to represent our new organization, Historic Red Hook. It is, we were formally established late last year, as you well know, as the consolidation of the Egbert Benson Historical Society of Red Hook, which is a name I am happy to see long gone, and the Friends of Elmendorf. So we just wanted to explain a little bit about what we are up to and there will be more rolling out later this fall, so this, our announcement, our launch is going to be a gradual rollout. But just to say a little bit about how we came to be, soon after my husband and I, or my husband convinced me to move to Red Hook, and that took about 35 years, he, he said that his hometown of Red Hook was a great place to live and I volunteered, as he did, for the bicentennial soon after we came here full-time. And I must say, it was a wonderful experience and I came to love this place. I can think of living no place else like this one. So now we're building on really the enthusiasm and support that we got from the bicentennial. I'm looking at the quilt because that represents so well all the volunteer effort that went into that. And also thank the Board for your great support of the bicentennial. It was, it was really a wonderful experience. So as the bicentennial drew to a close, some of us who had served on one or both boards sensed that this really was a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to do something with both organizations and that merging them would make them a stronger entity. So we decided we needed to explore it, we had both boards, they met, they agreed. We very much loved our slogan, Rural Traditions, Community Connections, and believed in that, but we also wanted to find new ways to bring history to life. So we, a merger committee was formed and the merger committee decided there were three high priorities. To have a board that was engaged and represented a good cross-section of the community as far as skills, age, et cetera, that could help us tell Red Hook's story, and I'm going to introduce a few soon. A new look, both electronically and physically, and strong relationships within the community and with Red Hook residents. So we started forming a board and I'm very happy that we have a wonderful board and I'm going to introduce actually now a few members who are here, starting with Beth Jones, who was the president of the Friends of Elmendorf, do you want to say that? Everybody knows you. Emily Major from Tivoli, Patty Vogel, and Seth Kramer. I think you did that? And Seth Kramer is here. So in addition, we have on our board Jen Huber and Robert McKeon and Doug Strawinski and Amanda Bodian and Adam Aronson.
And the infamous.
And Cornelius Elmendorf.
And our chairman of secretary.
I blush with it.
I knew you'd chime in if I forgot something. All right. So we also have a very active history committee that meets once every two months and Patty and I chair that committee. Also, our town historian, Wint Aldridge, is forming an advisory committee and he already has convinced Richard Genret to join the committee and he's approaching several others. So I hope we will have a big, broad group of supporters. As far as the new look, we designed a new logo, we have developed a new website, which is up, it's still being tweaked, but you can go to historicredhook.org and I think you'll agree it's a handsome new look. We are also going to try to develop some smartphone apps and those of you who attend our October 1st annual meeting will have the benefit of seeing a demo, courtesy of Seth Kramer, of what that might look like, a then and now smartphone app. Internally, we are actually trying to upgrade the archive activities and Patty is already training volunteers on our new collections database. We're digitizing as much as we can. And as far as our physical presence, we decided the Elmendorf Inn could stand a little bit of a fresh look. So since that's our great place to tell the story of Red Hook, we decided to repaint the first floor and hire local painter, Arnaud Corneo, who mixes custom paints using pigments and colors of the period. So he has transformed the first floor, it's really magnificent. We also are replacing the lighting, the incandescent and fluorescent lighting with LED lighting, so we can reduce energy costs and UV emissions and, and light the place more dramatically. So I think by October 1st or any meeting, I think it's, you'll, you'll have a sense of what the inn is going to look like. And then as far as relationships with the community, some examples of the kinds of things we'd like to do is this year is the 75th anniversary of the Red Hook Central School. So I hope you saw our float on hardscrabble day, did you like our float?
Yeah, it was great.
We had fun and we are also installing a version of that in the various, in the lobbies of the various schools. And we are, we've digitized a supplement from the Red Hook advertiser from 1939 that is just marvelous, that was announcing the new schools. So we'll, we'll show you, that to you soon too. And we're working with the library, that's a relationship that grew out of the bicentennial. We've just got a grant to purchase a historic marker to go in front of the octagon building because it certainly deserves that. So those are the kinds of things, we want to work in many ways with community organizations, not to tell them what we think the history of Red Hook is, but to really facilitate their telling their story. So we look forward to many of those relationships. We also just got in the mail a $5,000 grant from the New York State Parks Preservation, the South Preservation Office, which was applied for 2005 for educational programming related to preservation of the inn. So we should be off to a good start. I think right now we've actually started to open membership, we have membership forums, so I hope that those of you, I think most of you have already joined, but what I'd like to do actually is just put a stack and maybe we can leave it in the office and people come and say, what's historic, and then they can join and become members. So is there anything else that I've forgotten to say? Do you want to add anything to?
I'm a little lost for words.
So if, we would love feedback, questions, happy to talk more, you will hear more as the fall progresses. We have lots of events coming up, they're on our website, so we look forward to having fun. Any questions?
What was the name of the original, too? I know there was a Friends of Elmendorf.
Egbert Benson Historical Society of Red Hook.
I think it's appropriate for us to, one more time, thank you and thank everybody who's sitting there for your participation in that wonderful bicentennial. It certainly, when Patty came to see me the year before it was even thought about, she said, you know, we're going to be 200 years old and we really should be doing something. And I thought, oh man, I just know that's going to be a lot of work and where are we going to get people to help? And I didn't have to, you know, you just carried it, you just went with it, Wint was instrumental, you two people were instrumental, there were so many, Loretta, Companion, and all those people on that committee were just fantastic. I don't think any supervisor could be prouder than I am of that committee for celebrating the town that we all love. So it's an opportunity to thank you one more time and thank you for the work you're doing now. Okay, and we did that in short order, that was wonderful. I'm going to ask Vim Caluccio if he is ready for climate resiliency planning. Are you ready, Vim?
Yes, I am.
He is the chair of a committee that the town has sponsored for many years and Vim has jumped in both feet and has done a wonderful job already this year and I thank you for coming tonight. So this is a new aspect of disaster preparedness.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
I'll give you a brief overview of the actions of the committee and be happy to take questions. On September 8th, just going back a few weeks, weeks ago, we began, we had this session here in this room. It was an open information exchange type of, of meeting where we invited the public to come and participate with us. And the topic was on what is happening with changes to our local weather patterns as a result of global warming. And these changes are occurring, it's time we let go of any doubts about it. We are very convinced now that storms are occurring not only more frequently, but with greater severity, both here in our region and across the United States and in most parts of the globe as well. You may recall that on July 23rd, 2014, we had an extraordinarily difficult set of circumstances. That's when we had a terrific storm and the Red Hook Fire Department, which is run by Michael Lane, had to deal with the following all at the same time. A tree falling and hitting a car, a tree that was down with electrical wires, a car accident, a structure fire on Frauley Street, and lightning hitting a mobile home. And on top of all of that, the lightning and hail from the storm caused blackouts in both Columbia County and here in Dutchess County. Now this was all happening, they, they got all of these calls within a five or 10-minute reference period because the storm came through quickly at that point. And yet the fire department, with its limited capabilities, did a great job and actually was able to address all of those problems. They were assisted by the Town of Red Hook Highway Department and there's also a mutual arrangement with Rhinebeck, which helped out in Columbia County. So there is a, a network of different departments that will get involved in these situations. But the greatest concern that Chief Michael Lane expressed during our meeting was that in responding to emergencies, he's relying upon volunteers. It's an all volunteer department and while the volunteers do tremendous work, they're very good at what they do, they're well-trained, the problem is, we don't have enough of them or we have just enough to get by at this point. And there is a need for recruiting more of them. The way he put it is that he's relying on a skeleton crew of volunteers who do a superb job at unlimited in number. And then he went on to describe that the biggest problem in recruiting volunteers for the fire department is that the state of New York requires 130 hours of training to become a volunteer. Now, a volunteer doesn't have to pay for that, however, we're all very busy people. We have families and we have, in some cases, multiple jobs and we're all very busy and so there's a relatively small group of candidates for, for becoming volunteers. So one of the pitches that I would make right now is that we give a lot of thought and support to increasing the volunteer cohort. And just a couple of little facts about that, the minimum age to become a volunteer is 16 years of age. Of course, there are different categories of services and degrees of hazard that volunteers face, so we can start at 16 years of age. Anyone who might be interested or knows someone that is interested, contact the Red Hook Fire Department, which is easy to do if you go to redhookfiredepartment.org. Or they also have a Facebook that someone could use. Or someone can go to the firehouse on any Friday night when there are people there that could acquaint them with the facility and talk to them about the prospects of becoming a volunteer. The fire department is also engaged in recruiting folks from the Bard College EMT Emergency Technician Program. And finally, well, two other things. One is recruiting at the high school level and also on hardscrabble day. So it's very important that we support the fire department in, in getting additional support for their, for their programs. Now, we learned a lot about the disasters, we can see it on TV, we can see it in the newspapers, but there's no better evidence of what we're dealing with than to talk to our emergency responders. And I posed a question to both Michael Lane and to Teresa Burke about, are you seeing changes in weather patterns over time? Now they're, they're on the front edge of dealing with these conditions, so they're the best people to, to give us good feedback. And both Michael and Teresa did agree that what they're seeing is, is gradually worsening. Not, it's, we're not in a panic mode here, but we are noticing, you know, gradual changes in weather. Michael described it as more powerful storms and Teresa also mentioned that we're noticing micro bursts of strong activity occurring during like thunderstorms and other types of storms that are kind of more severe than we've seen in the past. So, you know, our own responders are verifying the fact that we need to be monitoring the situation and seeing what we can do to best address these types of situations when they Teresa also indicated that during some of these storms, there is a degree of frustration among the public, especially when they can't get by roads. And sometimes these roads are shut down for 24 hours. And what she would like everyone to know, and I'm speaking on her behalf, is that the town and the village are not allowed to go and address downed electrical wires, that's only something that the electrical utility can do. So as, as much as we're all seeing the situation, we can't get by it, it's annoying, we have to realize that that work has to be done by specialists and in a number of cases, you know, we just have to wait for that to get done by the people that'll do it safely. So we are asking people to, you know, have an understanding of this and to be patient. They can call the Highway Department for information if, if they would like to do so. So I gave you a sort of a description of some of the problems we have and then the question becomes, so what are we doing about it? And we're doing a lot and I'll, I'll run through a few of those things. In addition to helping out in, in the recruiting of volunteers, we've done a few other things like we invited ourselves to the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation's Emergency Response Center and a crew of us went there and had a real nice day. It was a sort of a meet and greet, took a tour of the facility and we got to, good personal relationships going there. Some of them were there to begin with, but some of us who hadn't met people had that And one of the interesting things that happened at that meeting, toward the end of it, it was sort of like a classroom-type situation where they were explaining to us their, their operations. And the topic of disaster preparedness plans came up. And the fellow from the, from the DEC who was running the program held up a disaster preparedness plan and they said, this is the type of plan, this is the plan that we want other municipalities to... This is the plan that we want other municipalities to emulate." And it turned out to be the Town of Red Hook Disaster Preparedness Plan. We were extremely gratified to hear that, and what it's telling us is that we have smart people here that know how to do the planning, and not only do the planning, but implement it. So the disaster preparedness plan addresses all of these emergencies in one way or another. And it's time-proven, it does work, and we should feel very good and confident that we do have good response procedures lined up. Another thing that we're doing is we're exploring opportunities with Bard College to have one of these large training sessions that the DEC does, and I actually spoke to you about this a few months ago, where the DEC will get hundreds, even a thousand, people in a large place and give them training on how to be your own best prepared person in the event of these types of events. And we're exploring the possibility of having that session. In fact, that's where I got that backpack with all of the goodies in it and on how to survive. And everybody who goes gets that, and that's always a draw. So we're looking for the opportunity to do that at Bard, where we could not only get the students and the faculty and other people at Bard there, but also recruit people from the Town of Red Hook and nearby towns and have one big event like that. That's in the works, and hopefully that'll happen. We're constantly revising the disaster preparedness plan, and it's undergoing another revision now, and we should have that done in about a month or so. Anything else that we talked about that...
I think you got it covered, Vin.
Yeah, I think we got it covered. Oh, the final point there is that this New York State DEC Preparedness Training Program makes everyone their own first responders. And I just want to reiterate a point that I had made the last time I spoke to you, and that is that the more individuals in the community learn how to be prepared for disasters, the better the whole community is, because we don't have to divert the attention of our responders and go into those people who are already prepared and know how to do it. So hopefully, we'll be able to have that session with the DEC, and we'll all learn a lot from it. Any questions, comments?
There was one thing that came up in the presentation that caught my attention because my husband's a ham radio operator, and one of his friends is in the audience. You said that they may be helpful in emergency situations. And I know there's interest, so I just did want to pass that on to you.
Yes, there is. That was Dick Franklin, who is a former chair of the Disaster Preparedness Committee. And he's very active on the committee now. He has a wealth of knowledge, a wealth of experience, and he will run over to the fire department and man the radios. And I do believe that if someone was to contact Michael Lane, he'll be able to tell them in what capacity he might be able to use them.
I'm a resident of Tivoli, so I often speak to the Tivoli Fire Department people. Are they, I hope they're folded in to all that you've been doing here. I talk to them a great deal, and they're very much a part of providing services townwide. And they're very much involved with Bard. I think they may even have some Bard students on board. It's a small fire department, but they cover, I think, about a third of the town, northern part of the town.
Well, that reminds me of these bullets that I did miss, in which Teresa Burke described how all the agencies are working together as a team. And she described the Highway Department, Central Hudson, Fire Department, the Village of Tivoli, and this mutual aid agreement. And during these types of serious events, they're all in direct communication and coordination with each other. And that seems to be a really good process that they have, so I appreciate your bringing that up.
They're always telling me about all the things they're doing when I'm at the bakery in Tivoli.
One of the things that I thank you for bringing up is the manual, and that we have a lot of dedicated people, volunteers, in this committee that have preceded you. And I think it's appropriate to give credit to John Douglas, who was the original chair when we formed this committee, who managed to get the information organized in such a fashion that we eventually had a manual. So I just wanted to give kudos to John Douglas for all of his work and that early committee's work, because it's the foundation for the manual that you now see. And thank you for updating it. I'm sure that it needs to be on a regular basis.
Yes, it does, and I, kudos to John, he did a great job.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Well, kudos to you, you're doing a great job, and your enthusiasm is wonderful. Thank you, Vin.
You're welcome.
Anybody got any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you for coming in, Vin. I appreciate it very much. As we said earlier, tonight, we have scheduled a public hearing on a C-Community Development Block Grant application, which is due October 17th. And a requisite of that application is that the town or municipality sponsoring the application must have a public hearing to inform everyone that they are applying and how they're, what they're applying for. So we have noticed the meeting, and I'm going to ask Claire Horst to read the notice of tonight's public hearing.
Okay. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook on September 24th, 2014, at 8:00 PM local time, at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, 12571, to hear all interested persons regarding the 2015 Community Development Block Grant application. Input from citizens and groups is solicited regarding the town's application. The project being considered for this is, the project being considered is for handicapped access features for town facilities. The maximum grant to be applied for is $105,000. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard in person or by directing comments and writing to the Town Board, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, 12571. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such a case, please notify the town clerk in advance at the above address or by phone 758-4606, so that arrangements can be made. My order to the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook dated September 8th, 2014, Sue McCann, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook.
Thank you, Claire. And so, we have talked briefly about this, but I will open the public hearing and maybe describe to you before taking comments, the application that we are considering submitting to Dutchess County Planning. As most of you know, because you come to this building frequently, we do not have handicapped accessible parking near the building or a safe way for anyone who has physical disabilities to enter this building easily from a car. So one of the features that we are planning and have mapped and have engineering documentation for is handicapped parking that will be located just alongside the building here with a sidewalk between the building and the cars, as they are located there, where someone can get out of the car and go directly to a sidewalk without entering the parking lot, making it far safer for those individuals to get to the building. The requirement will, of course, be handicapped accessible sidewalks. There'll be, having to be some drainage developed because of the sidewalk that's going in, so there's some engineering involved there. There will be bollards requested for opening, for an entrance button to open the front door for someone who is either wheelchair-bound or is on a walker, and it's difficult for them to manage into the building without an automatic door opening. There will also be features that will allow the bathrooms here to be opened automatically with, again, an outside push button outside the bathroom door. We felt that it was important to have some area out near this parking area where people could sit and have an easily accessible handicap bench, so that is also planned in the overall plan that the town is designing as we speak. And we'll go forward with or without these handicap features. That enables us to have a small green space out here. They're called parkettes, and we don't have a small green space in this overall parking space. And we felt while we are reconfiguring the parking lot, it would be nice to have a small area where people can gather on benches and maybe a table for employees and for visitors. So that's planned. And with what I have that will remain in the town clerk's office for examination, there is a map that has been designed by our engine, town engineer, and there is an application that is in draft form that I have started. I have initiated today in terms of filling the format out that's required by the county. And it's a little tricky, because they allow descriptions of only 750 characters, not words, but characters. So it has to be very succinct. And I know that this will be modified before the deadline date of October 17th. But the idea is to get the application in describing what you want to do, telling that it is allowed. And as a matter of fact, here in Red Hook at this moment, based on the 2010 census, the only qualifying project that the town can apply for today, based on the census 2010, are the American Disabilities Act features for a public facility. The, outside of that particular priority for the Community Development Block Grant, we do not qualify as income-eligible. The Village of Tivoli does. Some portions, I believe, of the Village of Red Hook do qualify for investment by these funds, but the town itself, outside of the villages, does not. So we have decided that this is an area that we can apply for. It is a need that we've had for some time, and the board has agreed to proceed with this application. So with that, I will open the public hearing, and take comment, please. Yes?
Linda Keeling, I had submitted a letter. I assume you received that.
Mm-hmm, we did.
I do have one question about the parking. Will it allow for vans and have that spacing in between, so that they can get out of the van and go into the space and go into the sidewalk?
I would assume that ADA parking would be large enough for vans, but I, that's a good question, and I appreciate it, Linda. I hadn't thought to, you know, to ask that of the engineers. I'm sure that they are in their design, considering the aspects that are needed for this, but thank you for...
So our sketch shows it.
Does it show the van with...
It's showing the sketch.
Okay. There you go. I didn't look at the sketch carefully enough.
One out of six, it looks like, Linda.
Okay. Are there any other comments? So basically, the ADA features are automatic doors or a single entrance door for the Town Hall, all automatic front interior doors, handicapped signs, pavers for green space, sidewalks with handicap features. No further comment or questions, anyone? Does the board have any comment on this before we close the public hearing? Hearing none. I close the public hearing at 8:16 on the Community Development Block Grant Application Thank you all for your attention, and thank you, Linda, for your letter. It was well-taken, thank you. I think we'll continue right on then, while we're in this vein of discussion, to pass a resolution establishing, I'm sorry. The public hearing resolving that the 2015 Community Development Block Grant application regarding the handicapped access features for the Town Hall will be voted now for submission with the application, and I so move.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next on the agenda is consideration of two committee appointments. One is the Planning Board, and one is the Conservation Advisory Council. You have in your packet a letter from Kaylee Winkle. And Jim, since you're the liaison to the Planning Board, would you like to make a motion to approve, Kaylee?
And Sue, it's now Robertson.
Oh, I beg your pardon.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't have, realize that before I asked, would that be on the agenda?
Now, is this Kaylee Winkle an error?
Well, that was her maiden name, and they just got married.
Oh, I beg your pardon. Oh, well, that's something to celebrate.
Her last name's Robertson now?
Okay.
I think she goes by Callie Winkle Robertson.
Winkle Robertson.
Why, we say Winkle Robertson, just so we know for sure.
Okay, so Jen, you're...
So move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Congratulations to Kaylee, and both her marriage and being appointed to the Planning Board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And the second is a person whose name is Jen Kavanaugh. And Brenda, you can bring this one forward, if you will.
Okay, I don't have, do I have something in hand?
It's okay.
Oh, I do see it.
Yeah.
Do you want to hear the letter?
Yes, please.
So this is from Jen Kavanaugh, applying for membership in the Conservation Advisory Council. My name is Jen Kavanaugh, and as of this Friday, August 15th, my family and I will be proud homeowners in the Town of Red Hook on Echo Valley Road. I'm currently a resident of the Town of Clinton and the Chair of Clinton Conservation Advisory Council. Today is my last official meeting. I have thoroughly enjoyed my time on the CAC and would like to continue my involvement in such a group, as well as use it as a vehicle to grow new roots in Red Hook. I believe my background and professional skills could prove useful to the Red Hook CAC. I have a B.S. in environmental engineering and over 10 years of experience as a consulting engineer. My professional background is primarily focused in the fields of surface water quality and stormwater compliance. Personally, I have great interest in the fields of green energy and energy efficiency. For the Clinton CAC, I was the member primarily responsible for reviewing and providing guidance to the Planning Board on submitted applications where land disturbance was proposed. The Clinton CAC has a positive relationship with the Planning Board, and I believe they saw value in the review of submitted... saw value in the review submitted by us, and those reviews helped to shape development and redevelopment within the town. During my tenure on the CAC, we were successful in bringing valuable site application-based information to the planning board in addition to larger, big-picture resources to the town, for example, open space plan, farmland protection plan, and biodiversity study. Also, through generous town funding, we were able to purchase energy efficiency tools, for example, energy use meters, leak detectors, radon, gas detectors, that were donated to the town library for lending to the immediate community, as well as the larger Mid Hudson library system. Please feel free to contact me regarding my request. I look forward to meeting you and my fellow Red Hook residents in the near future. Sincerely.
Thank you, Brenda. And as you were reading that about Jen, I just realized how lucky we are to have someone who comes to a committee with already committee experience.
Already experienced, yes. They're very lucky.
So is there a motion?
I move that Jen Kavanaugh be appointed as a member to the CAC.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Thank you, Jen. Jim, because you got away with it so easily, I can't resist asking you to read or at least paraphrase that letter from Kaylee Winkle Robertson after hearing this good letter because it'll help people understand how lucky we are to have another candidate for an important board, the planning board.
He's just afraid the meeting's gonna be too short.
No, I'm not. No, I'm not, but I, but it really, it was an oversight I should have, I know it's been read once already, but I think now that we're appointing her, it should be read again.
Okay, so I'll read the letter. This is to the town of Red Hook, to the Red Hook Town Board, and this is by Kaylee Winkle Robertson, the gal that we just a few moments ago appointed to our planning board. Dear Red Hook Town Board, I am writing this letter to introduce myself and officially state my interest in joining the Red Hook Town Planning Board. I became a resident of Red Hook in December of 2012 and run Salt Hill Farm with my very soon-to-be husband, who now is a husband, of course, as we know. That's Michael Robertson, who is currently a member of the Ag and Open Space Committee. We are an 85-acre diverse livestock and vegetable operation just about one mile north of the town, where we run a store selling our products to the community. Prior to moving here, I spent my time in New York City working in furniture and interior design before transitioning my creative focus on urban agriculture and land use. During this time, I also worked a number of organizations, as well as independently on securing access to healthy, locally-farmed food for New York City residents. My desire to join the planning board stems from my interest in land use designations, their effect on the livability of a community, and my aim to become an active member of this community where I intend to raise my family. I feel strongly in the importance of playing an active role in developing community and specifically as a small business owner, wanting to give back to the place that supports our business. I am specifically interested in the planning board as I am fascinated by how zoning laws and development plans can shape the walkability, feel, and success of a town. It is additionally a place where one can hear directly from the community members as to their individual needs while assisting in the implementation of our community's overall vision of the place in which we live. During planning board meetings I have attended in the past, I was excited to discover how much one learns about the history of our place, whether it's regarding street maps dating back hundreds of years, historical landscape designs, or bat migration patterns. I am looking forward to the potential for learning one has in the position of a planning board member. I see this learning opportunity as a large benefit to sitting on the board and can see the value in how that knowledge can help inform decisions regarding our town's responsible growth. Ultimately, my main goal in seeking the position of planning board member is support my community in the best way that I can. I feel that as someone who had made the decision to live and raise their family here, my service to Red Hook has the potential to be deep, energetic, and lasts for many years to come. I thank you for your time and consideration for the position and look forward to whatever role I may play in our community. Sincerely, Kaylee Winkle Robertson.
Thank you, Jen.
That's her letter that we received some time ago now because we've spoken about it at other meetings, too.
Well, Kaylee's been busy planning the wedding, so she wasn't quite ready. We're very happy to have both of those women join our volunteer, volunteer people in the entire town. It's an amazing group of people. I think I'm going to do a count before the next meeting and see how many people we actually have as volunteers. There may be over 100, there may be many more than 100, I think. Okay, on to the next thing, which is resolutions regarding a number of things. One, I have noticed from Teresa Burke that the highway department is planning to go out to bid for materials. And as you know, we generally, every year, have a, follow the formality of approving the highway request for materials. They are going out for bid for hot mix, all types, abrasives for snow and ice control, all types of cold mix patch, stone dust, processed item number four, screen fill, rip rack gabion stone, crushed stone, washed gravel, topsoil, boom truck and operator for tree removal, and trucking for crushed stone and abrasive sand. And the resolution is authorizing the town clerk to advertise a request for sealed bids for the purchase of ice control abrasives, a request for sealed bids for hot mixed asphalt, and a request for proposals for various materials and services for 2015. Whereas the highway superintendent of the town of Red Hook has requested that the town proceed with advertising for highway materials and services required for 2014, including requests for sealed bids for ice control abrasives, requests for sealed bids for hot mixed asphalt, and a request for proposals for various materials and services in each case pursuant to specifications substantially in the form on file with the town clerk. Is that to be 2014, Teresa, or should it be 2015?
It should be for the year 2015.
That's what I thought. Okay, so we'll change that to read, required for 2015.
I hope so, as we just signed up for a lot of standards, salt control.
Now therefore be it resolved that the town board of the town of Red Hook does hereby authorize and direct the town clerk to advertise for requests for sealed bids and requests for proposals as directed by the highway superintendent in accordance with the foregoing specifications, and I so move.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. The second is specifications, and Harry, maybe you want to take this one. This is specifications for the purchase of a one-ton dump truck for plow for the highway department. This vehicle replaces truck 29, a 2,000 Ford F-550 with 96,000 miles. The new truck will be purchased under New York State contract. This was budgeted for in the past year. Harry, would you like to discuss the due diligence that has been done?
Although it sounds like 96,000 miles is not an immense amount of mileage, and it isn't, but the truck is now 14 years old. And upon inspection, and we did, had two inspections done on the truck, there is a major problem with the frame of the truck at this point, having been welded, have been welded once, so with substantial rust. And at this point, it's broken again, and we're frankly afraid to put it back on the road. And patching, it would require what would fall in the category of casual patching. So, and we had, we had two inspections done on it. I did go, I did talk to both of the people who inspected it, and I must recommend that at this point, we move forward with replacing it for, before this snow year. It is an important truck in the fleet of our snow removal equipment.
Is that a motion?
I assume so move, that we move forward with that purchase and ask our purchasing agent to do so.
Second.
Are there any further questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
How long does it take to get a new truck?
Just about 30 days right now for that type, because it's not, it's not like with our plow trucks, it's taken as long as, the big plow trucks can take as long as eight months. But this is a smaller one-ton, one-ton heavy truck. It's a little more nimble than the big guys, so.
It's kind of the standard truck in statewide fleets.
Okay, Brenda, you have a discussion of Cornell connectivity project.
Just a brief couple of comments. The town has been chosen to participate in a pilot project in conjunction with Cornell University and the BEC Hudson River Estuary Program. So we were honored to have been selected. The pilot project will develop a local conservation framework that evaluates wetland, stream, and forest resilience, local connectivity of wildlife habitat, connections to the Hudson River Estuary, and adaptations of these ecosystems to climate change. So basically, Cornell is testing a model they've developed and involved GIS data and how well that works with community participation. So we've selected a group of stakeholders that represents the planning board, the CAC, GIS folks from the county, and we have a project team that's led by a planning group in White Plains, as well as our own planning group, Green Plan. And Sue and I are representatives on the, on the project team, and the estuary folks are as well. We'll have just four, four meetings with the stakeholders, and the project will be finalized in December, about mid-December. The result will be that we'll receive a conservation plan that emphasizes habitat connectivity and a map as well. So we've had two meetings, and it's moving along nicely, and we thank our stakeholders for participating. And I think that's about it.
Great. Thank you, Brenda. That was, it was a huge honor for the town to be, to be selected to be the model community. Look forward to hearing more. We're going to move on to board reports, and I don't have anything in the packet, but Jim, do you have anything to report on the planning board?
I don't. I have something in my packet. The zoning board, do you have?
Yeah, if you would give the zoning board a report.
Yeah, that's the thing. They had a, three public hearings at their last meeting, and all the variances were granted, but there was considerable discussion as to that, and the original applications were modified, you know, due to discussions with the concerned citizens and neighbors and so on. And I think it worked out pretty well in the end, and all three of, as I said, were granted. And that's really it.
Okay. Thank you, Jen. There is no ethics board report, so I think we can move on to department reports. The animal control officer's report is here, Brenda. Would you like to look at that?
There were, there were three dogs at large, and they were, two were reclaimed, and I see a note here that four times there was one at large on Memorial Lane, and it says GOA. Does that mean gone on arrival? I haven't heard that acronym.
I don't know.
So it sounded like that was, may still be roaming around. Six wildlife references were made to wildlife rehab. There was one dog bite, a German shepherd killed a poodle, and this case was turned over to the town attorney. I, I think there's been no further action. There were two cat references made to the SPCA and Bobby Joe from Living Eden. She says, "This month, I have called many people on the delinquent list, and most have not been in to relicense their dog." And we thank Stephanie. And I have a meeting at the beginning of the week to discuss sharing with Rhindex some the kennel and perhaps our two DCOs sharing the load when emergencies arise.
Good. Maybe now's a good time to pitch for people licensing their dogs.
That's a great idea. Do you want to do that, Paige?
Yes.
If you would be, if you haven't done so, come to the town clerk. Between the hours of nine and four every day, Monday to Friday.
Rabies, rabies.
And rabies vaccines. Bring their, prove that it had the rabies vaccine.
Right, it's so important that people do license their dogs, and it's a yearly reminder to keep those shots up to date. Occasionally, there are news reports of animals. There was one encounter somewhere here in Dutchess County, I think, because it was a local newscast talking about a teacher who had intervened with a child who'd been attacked by a fox, and the fox is rabid, and by the end of the day, by the end of the incident, the teacher had also been infected. So it's, you know, it's this licensing the dogs reminds us to make sure shots, particularly rabies, are up to, up to, up to date. And I just encourage everyone who has a dog, even though there's a leash law, to please get your dogs licensed. Again, it's available here at the town clerk's office, nine to four, Monday to Friday. Thank you. Okay, we have the assessor with us, who will give his report to the town board?
I handed in a, handed in a copy, but I can kind of do a little quick review here of what we've done since the last meeting. I've continued the sales analysis for the previous year to start establishing values for the 2015 role. We have been recording changes as directed by New York State as a result of the STAR registration program, inasmuch as we have had to remove some STARS at the New York State I did meet with some consultings regarding, consultants regarding commercial data review requirements and a schedule, and I wanted to discuss that at an executive session as far as the details of any contract. I spent most of the day today meeting with state and county representatives to begin the 2015 modeling process, which will help establish any trending values. This is required even in a non-reappraisal revaluation. Diana and I are committed to continue fair and equitable assessment practices. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Hearing done. Thank you, Scott. We will talk to you in a few minutes. Okay, Jim, there is a building department report?
Might be they've been pretty busy this night. Total permits, and there's, you know, number, number of them, but there's alterations, sprinkling systems, you know, decks and so on and so forth, were 30. That's the permit report as far as the inspection report. There were a total from August 25th to September 23rd, a total of 34 inspections. As far as COs or other... As far as COs or other certificates, there were fourteen. Permit fee report, these are fees collected. There were $1,059 in fees collected and complaints. There were three complaints followed up on, miscellaneous, a property maintenance, and a zoning complaint. Oh, in addition to that $1,059, I told you, there were eleven searches. And then, you know, we have a fee of $100 for a search. So that means the total fees collected were $2,159. It'll be eleven searches. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you Jim. I'm going to skip ahead because we have a department head here who is not alphabetically due yet, but we're going to bring him up front so he can go home and watch a ballgame or do whatever you do. Hank Van Parry's at the water department. Go to bed. That's a fine thing to do too.
My favorite government. I just thought it was time to get in here and explain what's going on. And it turns out to be especially appropriate because we've been having a pump problem for the past month. We've been coasting along quite comfortably. Both pumps operating fine. About a month ago, the oldest pump started pumping air. Air, not totally, but cloudy water such that you let the water set for a few minutes and it would clear up. So we decided to pull the pump. And as long as we were pulling it, it's over twenty years I thought. We better put in a new pump and motor. So we did. And new pipes. And we installed that. And lo and behold, we're still pumping air. The question is, what is it? A couple of possibilities. Water just isn't coming into the well fast enough to satisfy the volume put out by the pump. Surprising because this is our deepest well. The other one's still pumping fine. Anyway, so what do we do? We could rehab the well or we're thinking about putting in a variable speed drive such that you can control the speed of the frequency and thereby the speed of the motor to vary the volume. Jerry, the cores, our well guy, isn't comfortable with that either. So we're getting a new, another new pump, smaller pump, such that we can more or less maintain the volume which we had before. We were never pumping more than 200 gallons per minute, usually 180 or 190 with that well. The new pump that went in, of course, was new motor, new pump, tried to pump about 220 gallons per minute and that didn't work. So we're going to put in a smaller pump. Hopefully that'll do the job. That means the other, the new pump, previous new pump will be put in the shed and will maintain it for subsequent need. So that's where we stand on that. We're going to lower our budget, but I think we have enough in the reserves to, in the unallocated reserve. I'll make sure of that. I'll check on that. So anyway, that's the pump situation. Other than that, we finally got rid of the old steel tank that's been lying beside the pump house since we established the wells there. It was the original pressure tank for Annandale when they were on Aspen Wall and it was our pressure tank when we first moved to the new supply. It's been rusting and we tried to get rid of it. A few years ago, we would have had to pay to have somebody cut it up and haul it away. This time, Millens over in Kingston was interested and we actually got 180 bucks out of it. They cut it up and hauled it away. And so we got a few bucks rather than paid. That was, it's good because we needed the room there to do a little dig, exploratory dig. Next year, we want to put in a, essentially a connection to the water main from the main in the pump house to the main in the ground. There's a lot of rust on it and we wanted to dig outside to understand what's there so that we can be more explicit in terms of going out for a request for proposal next year. So we did that. Last year, we had some graffiti on our water tank. Some of it wasn't bad. There was one additional one this year, but the problem is the barbed wire had been broken, you know, rusted. So we finally had to get poison ivy removed. Nobody likes to do that because the fence guys didn't want to work in poison ivy either. So anyway, we have mostly new barbed wire. Some of it was still good. So that's done. And that's about it in terms of what we've done this year. Any questions?
Was the well, have we heard spots on the well? Do you think that they've silted in some tank?
It's quite possible that, yes. You know, the gravel may have been infiltrated with sediment, sand, or, you know, stuff that doesn't pass the water freedom. So that's possible. So rehab might blow that stuff back out and open it up somewhat, but we didn't want to take the time to go for that this year.
So the smaller pump's got to pump it back in 180 gallons probably a minute or?
Yes. And we hope that solves the problem. Just, it's been kind of a puzzle. Because as I say, that's our deepest well. The other pump has been pumping high volume and it's ten feet higher in the aquifer. So anyway, it's a little confusing. You never know. If you can't get down there and see, it's a guessing game.
It's remarkable how many years have passed that there have been no problems, you know. And every year that goes by, I think, when is the big, you know, when is the big foot going to drop?
Yeah, they're all original, aren't they, the pumps from the original?
No, we put in a new one in 2010.
2010?
Yes. We had some sort of a leakage to ground, electrical leakage, okay? We suspected the pump, checked out the wires, thought, well, we'll replace the pump. That wasn't it either. But we did put in a new pump. Again, they were old. They've done their job.
Pumped a lot of water.
Yeah. What we wound up doing then was replacing the wires, the power wires out to the pump. And that seemed to solve the leakage problem. It was very high, you know, a million gnomes or so, but it's just enough to be a concern.
I noticed in one of the reports we had in our board materials that one of the wells, the water was, seemed to be a lot, the level was a lot lower. Did I misread that? Like thirty some feet?
They've been varying the way they measure the depth of the water. We're back to the original way, looking at the amount of, the depth of water above the pump. And typically the well we're just working with, it's about fifty feet of water above the pump and the other one was about forty feet above. Now that is not the level when the pump is pumping. They can get that too, but it's a static level and it's, they're consistent.
Gives us an opportunity to thank you and the water board for all the good work you do throughout the year and for the many years. Thank you.
We allowed that pump to fail.
We're grateful to have you and keep in mind.
It's still fine. Thank you.
That's what we like to hear. Thank you. Okay. I just want to report that the new bookkeeper, the supervisor is doing wonderful work. She's learning very quickly the procedures and the, and there have been some changes actually in the process that goes on there due to a change in our banking, choice of banks. And so she's had a lot to deal with and we're very, very grateful to her. And it's turned out to be a real blessing. And she and Debbie have been working together to handle some of the questions that have arisen regarding the budget for 2015. And Rose and she and I have been meeting. And by the 30th of this month, I want you to know that I believe we will have that tentative budget filed with the town clerk as we want to do. So next month is time for us all to put our heads together. And I believe we have set two dates. Could you look at it with me? Read your calendars and make sure that we are all on the same page in that regard. I believe we scheduled the 6th and the 7th. Is that not right?
Yes, that's what I have.
That's what I have.
Okay. Okay. Now, after that, is there time in the following week that any of you, Jim, I believe you will be away that following week?
Yes, I will be away that following.
And you'll be back by the 20th?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'm gone the 15th to the 29th.
Okay. Well, I think what we'll do is what we said we would do the last time. Let's see where we are on the 7th. And it goes to public meetings. We can decide to have another meeting the following week if we need to or wait until Jim comes back, but then we'll be missing Brenda. Either way, we're going to be missing someone.
Well, you could have one both and just, I would be at one and Brenda would be at the other.
That is true. We may need, we may need two more. So we'll just have to take them as it comes. Okay. So that is, again, to be clear with the public, anyone can attend these workshops. It will be Monday, October 6th at 7:30 here and Tuesday, October 7th.
At seven?
So 30 or 7?
I'm sorry. Did I say, I thought it was seven. Did I say seven?
You said 7:30, but we said seven before.
Okay. Seven o'clock.
Okay.
Thank you. While we have calendars, I would like to remind you and everyone that the Shared Services Committee will have a public informational meeting on September 29th at 7:30 at the Village of Red Hook Hall to share with the public the work that has been done so far on the shared services of Highway Department activities. So the consultants will be with us that night. We will be there to make a presentation and to answer questions. And I hope that the public will be interested enough to come out and find out what's been going on for the past six months. The consultant that we have has been working with us and he's quite amazing. And some of the materials that you will see will be very persuasive and will be, in some cases, surprising, some of the things that have come out of this study. So I hope you will be with us. And that is again, next Monday, the 29th at 7:30 at the Village Hall.
There's that shared services, the county meeting on the 15th. If somebody's going down.
Yes. That is another shared services opportunity at 4:30 to 8:30 on Wednesday, October 15th.
It sounded good.
I'm sorry.
I mean, it sounded very worthwhile.
Yes. It's a Dutchess County Budget Forum. And I'm sorry, I don't have the place. Does anyone have?
It's the Grand, wasn't it?
At the Grand Hotel?
Yeah.
Okay.
I got another reminder to you there.
Okay, thank you. So at the Grand Hotel, October 15th, 4:30 to 8:30.
I think you're supposed to reserve.
Yes, and reservations are requested. Okay. Highway, Teresa.
I just wanted to let you know that next week, from the 29th of September to October 3rd, within that week, we're doing paving work on the Annandale Triangle, Annandale Road and 9G. There are signs up now that say road closed for construction next week and the road will be closed only while we're there paving. It's not closed for an entire week. It's just when we're doing the work. If there's a couple of local residents, they will be able to get to their houses. We just want people to know that they should plan accordingly, reroute their traffic pattern. And we hope to have it done in two to three days. Probably Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, as soon as we're finished, we'll remove the signs. But if they see the signs up this weekend, it's for next week's construction.
And again, the road is?
Annandale at 9G, the triangle. There's actually two little pieces.
Two sides is ours, isn't it?
Pardon me?
The one side is the county road, right?
Right. We have the Y.
Two sides, yeah, and Y.
So.
Okay. Thank you Teresa. Harry, would you give the purchasing report?
Yes. Actually, it are the busy time for Ted. The biggest purchase order, there were $248,000 worth of purchases last month. The largest thing for, it was over $99,000 for the Norton Road repaving. He arranged to have a dehumidifier installed in our record room in the basement. The records were actually soft, they were so humid down there. And the humidity now has been staying, or just below 50%. So they'll last forever at that rate, which was the whole idea. And some of the things that he'd been working on for some time, with the help of Crawford Engineering, we found an organization to maintain the new high-tech boiler that's in the highway garage. So that is, we've signed up with them and that's done. And some of the post-construction work that you have to do on a new building as the concrete slabs dry, harden, they shrink. So they make, you have some planned cracks in them that need to be filled and that's been done. The cracks are built into them and expected to open and they did that.
Okay. Thank you Harry. Is there a recycling center report Brenda?
No, there's not.
Right. And I have no police department reports at this point, so maybe the next meeting. Okay. So I believe that's everything that we have for departments. Jim, there is a water district report here. If you, do you want to?
Pretty much what Hank told us.
Right.
Take it back out, put it away. Yeah, that's pretty much what Hank went over. The only thing that I wasn't aware of until Hank brought us your attention of the pump problem that he's been dealing with.
Any reports? There is a CAC report, there is a recreation department report, and Trails. So Brenda, if you would do the CAC and Trails, we'll let Harry bring up the rear with Recreation.
The CAC report. CAC completed bike pedestrian counts for Dutchess County at the Village Traffic Light last Tuesday and Saturday, counting bikes and cars during fifteen-minute intervals for two hours at each event. They tabled with RUPCO, I think that's, I better not try. Anyway, a preservation company from Alster County. And NYSERTA, to promote energy audits at Hartsdale, they got about forty leads and participated in a monthly call with City University of New York for the Sun Shot Initiative to streamline permitting for solar power. And that was from Lori Houston.
Thank you.
Trails, I don't have a report, but we have a new potential member, Anna San Juan. She attended the last Trails meeting and the chair, Howie Callis, would recommend that she be appointed. And we just received a letter from her. She says, "My name is Anna San Juan. I am writing to indicate my interest in being appointed to the Red Hook Trails Committee. My husband and I are raising our two sons, ages 10 and 8, in Red Hook. We are small business owners and actively involved in the community. My husband owns and directs a music school, the community music space." My husband owns and directs a music school, the community music space located in Red Hook's chocolate factory. I have a nonprofit and business consulting private practice. I'm a board member of the Red Hook Education Fund and my husband and I volunteer for our children's intramural sports leagues. We moved to Red Hook from Boulder, Colorado, seven years ago. Colorado is known for its extensive hiking of biking trails which allow people to live in most towns without a car. I have benefited from local trails for walking and biking and I am happy to support the care of Red Hook's trails. My home on Aspen Wall Road sits alongside the lands owned by the Red Hook Recreation Center. I have walked these lands throughout this past year and have noticed how beautiful they are and how nicely they are groomed. I have grown to see this property as an asset to the community and am happy to offer the Trail Committee my volunteer time to support the care of this park. Thank you for considering my interest, Anna San Juan."
And you say Howie has met her and recommends her for the committee?
Yes, she attended their last meeting. He's also spoken to her privately and I had a brief conversation on the phone with her. I don't know her, but she sounds like a great candidate.
And I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared. Is there a vacancy on that?
There are, yes, there is, there are two, I think.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion that she be appointed?
I would move that Anna San Juan be appointed to the Greenway and Trails Committee.
Second, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Brenda.
Thank you.
Harry, the Rec Commission?
The Rec Commission is, as we speak, wrapping up the park for the season. It was a very successful season of functions and we had kind of a, out of everybody, I wouldn't say an out of boy or an out of girl, because everybody was involved from the county. And they, in fact, increased their financial assistance to us. And I hope that's in response to the really successful programs we had this, we had this summer. There, the new, the new product of park, John is working on getting the wetland defined and the work completed on that. We have a deadline coming up, but it must be done. The permit will expire, so that has to be done now and that is underway. We're doing everything we can to make it happen in time. But it was a successful year is the bottom line and there's been a lot of, a lot of very positive feedback on behalf of the Rec Commission.
Yes, I've heard some, on Hardscrabble Day, I've heard from some parents who said their children had a wonderful time this year this summer. So, it continues to be a star in the firmament of the county's recreation programs. John Kim, because of the amount of work that he has done in verifying and codifying everything that has happened there, to Dutchess County Youth Bureau has had an increase in support for that program. And we are very grateful to John for his diligence. Without it, he would not have received those extra funds. Those funds were a result of some people's, some municipalities not doing the paperwork and so there were funds that were not awarded and they came back to us and we're grateful to John. In your folder, you will find a letter from Kirchof Properties regarding the Hoffman property. This is for your consideration. We are not going to deal with it tonight, but I want you to take it with you and study it because it will be on a future agenda very soon. And I believe you have copies of a couple of pieces of correspondence. One is related to the intermunicipal services agreement with the village of Tivoli, with slight modifications from the mayor of Tivoli to me. I reviewed it and I am making modifications of his modifications and we will probably ink that agreement in the month ahead. So, we are in agreement that the building department has worked hard for the residents of Tivoli. And I know it's an ongoing, it's ongoing work, especially in villages where people live close to one another and it's a little bit different in towns where there are acres between properties. But in villages, the homes are very close to one another and so neighbors can present each other with challenges and it's our building department that has to deal with those. So, we are grateful to Steve and to Bob, Steve Cole and Bob Fennell for doing that. In executive session, I draw your attention to a letter requesting that we consider a modification or a lot line adjustment of property owned by the town of Red Hook. So, we will review that tonight in attorney-client. And that's all I have. Is there any further business that the board would like to bring to our attention? Is there any public comment before we go into attorney-client? Any questions, comments?
Considering the budget, will you have a copy of the tentative budget sometime in the near future?
Yes.
Like, say tomorrow or anything like that?
It won't be, it won't be complete until it's filed with the town clerk on September 30th.
September 30th.
That is the deadline. And it will be in, you can go through the town clerk on September 30th.
On September 30th, okay.
Yeah, okay.
And?
That is a week from yesterday. Not that I'm counting.
And Mr. Ross? And what's, where's the location of the main pump that Hank was talking about, the pump that's not working? Can you tell me where that is?
Well, there's two pumps. That's where both the wells are, yes.
Okay. Do you know where they're located?
Yeah, they're, they're actually, you know where the rec park is?
Yes.
They're across the street from the rec park.
Across the street.
That's where our pumps are.
Okay.
Down the road, the pump house is down there, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. I thank you all for coming and we will now go into attorney-client and executive session. Thank you.